Welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order and entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Tonight, we have four public hearings. If you'd like to address the council in regards to any of these, please step forward to the podium, give your name and address for the record. This is time and place for a public hearing on Resolution seventeen dash two forty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an electric easement in connection with the installation of electric facilities by Mid-America Energy Company. This has been continued from the November thirteenth meeting. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to address the council in regards to this Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing on Resolution seventeen dash two sixty-six, a resolution to dispose of city property legally described as the west twenty and a third feet of Lot ten, and the east twenty-four and two-thirds feet of Lot eleven, Block fifteen, Omaha Edition, formerly known as thirty, thirty, or formerly, former, anyway, I'll let it go, thirty, thirty-three Sixth Avenue.
Motion.
Formerly, it should be, isn't it?
I think formerly. Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? And...
Oh, is there anyone to speak?
Sorry. Anyone want to address the council in regards to this? And we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for Resolution seventeen dash two sixty-seven, a resolution to dispose of city property legally described as lots thirteen through fifteen. Auditor subdivision of part of Lot four, the northeast quarter, the northwest quarter, and part of Lot one, the northwest quarter, of the northwest quarter, all in Section thirty dash seventy-five dash forty-three, City of Council Bluffs, Potawatomi County, Iowa, adjacent to fifteen, I'm sorry, to one fifteen Norton Avenue. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to address the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing in the matter of Resolution seventeen dash two sixty-eight, a resolution to approve the plans, specifications, and form of contract for the Iowa Department of Transportation, IMN dash oh-two-nine dash three, parentheses two-eleven, fifty-four dash OE dash seventy-eight, Phase Two Project for the realignment of Dodge Riverside Golf Course Project. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to address the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Council Bluffs, Iowa, as adopted by reference in Section fifteen point zero-two point zero-seven-zero of the two thousand fifteen Municipal Code of Council Bluffs, Iowa, by rezoning property legally described as the south sixty-six feet of the east half of the southwest quarter, northeast quarter, lying west of South Thirty-Fifth Street, along with the east half of the northwest quarter, southeast quarter, lying north of US Highway two-seventy-five, and the west half, South Thirty-Fifth Street, all in Section sixteen dash seventy-four dash forty-four, from A to Parks Estates and Agricultural District to C to Commercial District, as defined in Chapter fifteen point one-five. The location is the northwest corner of the intersection of South Thirty-Fifth Street and US Highway two-seventy-five.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance six-three-one-four, an ordinance to amend Title Nine Traffic, Chapter nine point three-four, Emergency Snow Routes of the two thousand seventeen Municipal Code of Council Bluffs, Iowa, by amending Section nine point three, nine point three-four point zero-three-zero, Emergency Snow Routes established.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Motion to waive, third.
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion to waive? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution seventeen dash two-six-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement and award contract to MMC contractors for the Bass Pro Shop Rooftop Unit Replacement Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution seventeen dash two-seven-zero, resolution authorizing a refund credit of overcharged permit fees to Questa LLC, associated with air conditioning and heating equipment in the calculation of electrical permits for the industrial and large commercial with a valuation of one million, five million or more.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
We, we... Go ahead.
Go ahead, Roger.
I just had a question on, uh, why it's a credit versus a refund. Somebody had asked me, and I said I would find out.
Well, we, we believe that they will come for additional building permit fees, and so we'll just give them a credit towards those future fees.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure what the reason was.
And I, I just wanted to cover some of the discussion during the study session, which relates to Mr. Sandow's question. Fairly confident that there's going to be additional permitting business because the, the ultimate parent entity that, that is going to receive the refund of, of these permit fees is totaling about three-quarters of a million dollars is, is Google. And I thought that was, that was something that was a matter of public interest and ought to be put out there.
Thanks. It's Questa LLC. We'll be getting the funds, so, thank you. Any other discussion?
No, just so that the public at home that's watching understands, it was miscalculated on the large industrial fees, and so it was calculated incorrectly. We adjusted those fees and, and the way it's calculated at our last meeting. However, the overcharge was so substantial that there was a request that we do that. And I think it, it's in good faith, and we want people to know that, you know, if we find an error in the way we're calculating things, and it's brought to our attention, you know, we certainly are going to make right with that, and hopefully that people will understand and have confidence in the city to do the right thing.
And the only thing I'll add to that is there was some discussion, which I think, I think was unanimous. Somebody can correct me if I'm mistaken. Nobody voiced opposition with the, the mayor. I'm grateful that he's agreeable to have staff take a look at, just look at all of our fees and make certain as best we can that they're, they're accurate so that we're looking not just at the, the large companies, but we're also looking at, at the so-called little guy, making certain that we're doing right by, by everyone concerned, no matter how quote-unquote big or small they may be. And everybody's agreeable to that, if I understand correctly. It seems fair. And so, so that was part of the discussion as well, so that people don't think that we're singling out anybody for special treatment. We definitely are not.
Other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution seventeen dash two-seven-one, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an order accepting the acknowledgement settlement agreements from the following businesses: Buc-E's Express nineteen, eighteen thirty-nine Madison Avenue, Buc-E's Express number thirty-four, thirty-five oh-one West Broadway, Dollar General number fifteen seventy-four, at twenty-seven thirty-one East Canesville, DNS Express, twelve twenty North Twenty-Fifth Street, Come and Go two-twenty at twenty twenty-four Fifth Avenue, and Super Quick Stop at twenty-eight-hundred Twin City Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just that the settlement agreements were pertaining to providing tobacco to a minor. So that's what the issues were.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution seventeen dash two-seven-two, resolution accepting the bid of Valley Corp. in the amount of eight hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents for the levy certification project, Drainage MR2 Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution seventeen dash two-seven-three, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an order accepting the acknowledgement settlement agreement from Andrews Lounge and Car Wash at twelve-ten North Twenty-Fifth Street for violation of Iowa Code Section four-thirty-five A point-two.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution seventeen dash two-seven-four, resolution authorizing the purchase of emergency generator equipment and service in the amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars for the Police Department Headquarters Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Um, this is one I believe that the chief said that the original bids, the bidders weren't, the bids weren't done correctly, or they weren't, um, able to bid. And so the second bids, then, when they let it out for bid again, they came in lower. So that's always nice when we see the bids come in a little lower.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution seventeen dash two-seven-five, resolution accepting the bids of Midwest Storage Solutions in the amount of two hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred twenty dollars to provide storage equipment and services for the Police Department Headquarters Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution seventeen dash two-seven-six, resolution accepting the bid of Payless Office Products in the amount of five hundred eighteen thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars to provide furniture and services for the Police Department Headquarters Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution seventeen dash two-seven-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement and award contract to Anderson Construction for the Council Bluffs Fire Station Number Six Renovation Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations, eight A, cigarette permits, eight B, liquor licenses, one, two, and three.
Motion to approve applications for permits and cancellations, A as well as B, one through three inclusive.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Uh, I know there's some people here from Hawthorne Court, and alls we did tonight was set the public hearing for the December meeting, which is December eighteenth, and so... All right, any citizens requesting to be heard?
None received.
Anyone wishing to address the council? Yeah, if you give your name and address for the record, Jerry.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, although it's a little late. We seem to be the punching bag the last couple of weeks between Omaha and Council Bluffs concerning a casino proposed in Carter Lake, Iowa. Anytime I've ever dealt with Council Bluffs, City of Omaha, I've been very upfront with the officials, either come over here, or, but always discuss something with them. I was really taken back at an article written in the World Herald last week, which is why I'm here. I really didn't know, and if there's apology on my part, I'll give it, but I don't think there is. I really didn't know it was any Council Bluffs business, what kind of business we have in Carter Lake. I don't recall ever asking Council Bluffs permission in the last four years to build four or six new businesses, two motels, a, a distribution center for Titan Tool, Pfeffers Pizza, Casey's, one of the busiest Casey's around. So I was kind of put back of, what the hell do we have to talk to Council Bluffs for when someone wants to build a casino in Carter Lake? And I'll tell you where I build my history from, is when all the gambling first come to Iowa, it come by virtue of riverboats. And prior mayor, Tom Hanifin, was just elected, and I was just defeated. But I was going to Clinton, Iowa, because Sioux City, Iowa, put a claim in for all the riverboats, from Sioux City to Saint Joe. Council Bluffs wasn't going to oppose it. I called Mayor Hanifin. I said, "Are you going to Clinton, Iowa?" "Nah, I'm not going over there." I said, "Well, I'm going over there. You're going to give Sioux City all the rights on the Missouri River, on the Iowa side, for all the gambling? Are you kidding me?" He showed up, after I convinced him he should. And if he was here, he'd have to agree with me. But when we got over there, he wasn't going to speak. Well, I went over there to speak, and I did speak. And so did he, but he followed me and mimicked what I said. And the riverboat gambling come to this area because people from Reno come to my house. I didn't even know who they were. And before six months was over, the chairman then, Chubbino, of the New Iowa West, I said, "You know, these people want to build a casino in Carter Lake. I thought maybe you could be the nonprofit group, like you are, these casinos starting in Council Bluffs." He said, "Why would we want to help Council Bluffs, or Carter Lake?" I said, "Because we got the best location of anybody for a casino." He said, "Well, I'll give you that, but we're still going to help Council Bluffs." And so that's fine, that's fine. So now, I go back to the Indian wanting to build casinos. If you would read the law back in the nineteen hundreds, late nineteen hundreds, it's called the Indian Gaming Act, passed in Washington, and it was passed to help the Indian help itself. They did a pretty good job when they got started, Anawa, Iowa. They started building the hospital. And before it was done, the, I, I don't know other, any other way to say this, but the white person said, "We can manage them casinos for you better than you can." That's what they did. They started managing them. Before it was done, the State of Iowa passed riverboat gambling. Now, where does a riverboat moor? They moor on land. The riverboat lasted for about eight or ten years. And who would have thought that the State of Iowa was going to allow somebody to build a casino on land, on land? And now, all of a sudden, our big brother, Council Bluffs, decides the only place they will agree that you can build a land casino in this area is in Council Bluffs. And I totally disagree with that, yeah. And I don't disagree with it that I'm from Carter Lake. I disagree with it that I'm an American citizen. And I just really feel, felt insulted when I read the article that said, "Council Bluffs probably is really, will sue for this, to stop this casino." I don't recall us ever interfering when the City of Council Bluffs had three casinos built. In fact, I don't think we ever interfered when you build a Casey's, or a Buck-E's, or anything else. But when we're trying to get ourself lifted up, Council Bluffs thinks they're my big brother. Yeah, you're not my big brother. You're not anyone's big brother in Carter Lake. We have stood the test for years, and we're doing a pretty good job. We're doing a pretty good job. And it just appalled me when one, a gentleman that I have a tremendous amount of respect for, and he knows I do, and he, he will tell you that, is your city attorney, Dick Wade. And in the article, unless they didn't print it right, he said, "Yeah, we'll probably seek legal action, legal action against the Indians that have a chance to build." And then other officials in Council Bluffs says, say that it'll be unfair competition. I don't ever recall anyone getting involved when we build a Casey's in Carter Lake. No one from Council Bluffs said, "Hey, we can't take the competition." But the comments were made from this city, by city officials, that this is going to be unfair competition. You've never had any competition, so it's easy to say, "You're going to have a casino? We think it's unfair competition." Well, let me tell, let me tell you something about a business. If you can't take the competition, go out of business. I resent the fact that no one from this city had the courtesy to call my office and ask me what I thought about a casino coming to Carter Lake. They couldn't even ask the question, but they could give their answer that we don't deserve to try and climb the ladder like Council Bluffs. And, and, and I hate to make them comments, because I've always had an excellent relationship with the City of Council Bluffs when I've been in public office. And, uh, you talk about what's unfair competition, the comments that people from in office in this city made about Carter Lake doesn't deserve this because it's going to be a casino that's unfair. I resent it.
Jerry, Jerry, and Jerry and I go back a long time. You've done a great job in Carter Lake. It's a great community. I, I think you can take the word probably out of this question. We are going to file lawsuit.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to, we were promised when that land was bought by the Ponca tribe that it would be used for a health clinic, nothing else, other than a health clinic. If we would support it, we were lied to. We think that that's inappropriate. It's not a fair, you talk about a Casey's here and a Casey's there. They, they sell the same products for the same price. That's competition. That's the American way. This is not competition. There is no gaming tax. There's no revenue for the State of Iowa. There's no revenue for the local entity. You may get an agreement with the casino, but we feel that it's detrimental to the State of Iowa, to the City of Council Bluffs. And I think you're going to see the Iowa Attorney General and the Iowa, and the Nebraska Attorney General join in that lawsuit. So we did it before. You should have anticipated it was going to happen again.
Yeah.
It's, it...
But in this...
And it has nothing to do with Carter Lake. We love Carter Lake. We want to see...
Well, it has everything to do with Carter Lake. Yeah, it has everything to do with Carter Lake. Yeah. What, what happened here was someone didn't like the results of the ruling that the American Tribe Association made. However, the Court of Appeals in the case agreed with them.
Yeah, that's the American way. And if it goes up the ladder, and it ends up...
You're right. You said the words, Matt. That's the American way.
And, and we'll litigate it in court.
The court just, just...
In the end, I would ask one question. When the City of Council Bluffs files this lawsuit, I'd like to know where the money comes from that pays for the lawsuit.
Just to be clear for the sake of the record, and sir, I, I don't think we've met, so I, I apologize. I don't think we've met. Just for the sake of the record being clear, the, the court case from roughly a decade ago found against the, the ruling, and so and ordered it, they call it remand, which is just legal speak for the case, has to go back to the commission. And the commission came to the same result, and one could argue that the courts could very likely find that if you come to the same result through the same sort of process, and the courts have already told you, you didn't follow the law, they might very well say that again. But they may, they may not. I can't speak for the courts. But just for the sake of the record, the courts found that it was not done right the first time. That's why it had to go back to the commission. If, if the courts had agreed with the commission in 'oh-seven, we wouldn't be here in twen-, in the end of 2017 talking about this.
The commission...
No, it hasn't gone to court yet. That's what we intend to do.
They said that we agreed that, that they can have a casino in Carter Lake, Iowa.
No, sir. No, sir. It was remanded. Sure.
So if Council Bluffs wants to keep...
Jerry, you have to go to the microphone.
Fighting Carter Lake. That's fine with me. You won't be dealing with me, you'll be dealing with the gentleman back here.
Sure.
The mayor-elect.
Sure. And just, ju...
I wanted to set the stage.
Sure.
That the way Council Bluffs handled this whole thing.
Yeah.
For the City of Carter Lake, because the property is in the City of Carter Lake, was an insult. I'm done talking.
I, I appreciate that, but, you know, from, from my perspective, and I believe my colleagues, is nothing to do with where it intends to go. It has to do with the fact that it would pay no gaming tax. The state license ones pay twenty-six percent tax. Twenty-five of that twenty-six percent goes to your state fund, so that the state fund, so it can fund the things in the state, like the state patrol and things of that nature. like the State Patrol and things of that nature. They wouldn't have to pay any of that. The remaining one percent, half goes to the county, half goes to the city of Council Bluffs. The city of Carter Lake, if they make a deal with an entity not subject to all of the laws of the United States, can have a deal that can be not followed, and then there's no recourse. The other ones are subject to regulation. They have to pay tax. They have to pay property tax, and it's wherever they're located. You know, if a casino wanted, or another business wanted to open in Council Bluffs and didn't want to pay the twenty-six percent gaming tax and didn't want to pay property tax. Speaking for myself, I'd find that unfair competition there, too. So the fact that it may be in Carter Lake, or maybe, I spent most of my childhood in Underwood, so I'll pick on Underwood. If it may go there, the answer would be the same. In my mind, you know, it comes down to, do people contribute to the taxes, or don't they? And that, to me, where that comes down. And you know, just, the court cases said it wasn't done right before, and so it'll, it'll be up to the courts again to see if the commission is still not following what the courts ordered. It's the court one level below the Supreme Court in St. Louis called the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is probably where it'll maybe end up eventually. But you know, the rules ought to be followed. And so that's the dispute. It has nothing to do with the folks at Carter Lake, has nothing to do with who's bringing it. You may not know it, but my step-grandfather was a Lakota Sioux. So Watson, actually, and that was his name he took. It was an English name. That's actually a fake name. I don't know our real family name on that side because he wouldn't speak of it. He had quite an experience growing up. He talked a little bit about that, but he wouldn't even give the name. So I can assure you, and all my other side, on that side of the family, I'm only half-related to, they are Lakota Sioux, and so I have nothing against those of Native American ancestry. I'm related to many of them. And I know my colleagues don't have anything against folks, too. We just want the same rules to apply to everybody.
Bruce Kelly. Eight sixty-four McKenzie Avenue Bike Trail. Now I'm going to get back into the legal deal that they're bringing up. If Carter Lake would have said, hey, I got a piece of property. I'm going to build a casino on it. The Iowa Gaming Commission would have said no because it would have interfered with our profits and our establishments, and you can't build it there. So they go around and get the Indians to do it, and they get this part done, and it's everything like this. But it's still, the Iowa Gaming Commission has no jurisdiction over it. But it's going to affect our outcome in the long run. If they would have had a piece of land, like I said, that they owned and wanted to build it and had a builder that's going to put fifty-six million dollars into it, the state of Iowa Gaming Commission would have said no because it would have interfered with the other two casinos in this area. They just did it back east to two different places in the last year. So it isn't something that, it's, we're against you. We're, you are profiting from the casinos over here because of Iowa West. Iowa West has donated to Carter Lake. And don't say they haven't because they have. So, and you say you're going to get in an agreement with the Indian tribes. All of a sudden, you get an agreement, but they don't have to obey by it. And then of all of a sudden, who's going to be protecting it? They're going to have their own police. There's nothing you can do unless they call you in, and they can then throw you out. They're going to supply not paying you city tax for fire and rescue that they're not going to pay for. And you're, we're going, the city of Carter Lake is going to have to provide that for them unless they get their own. You've got to think of the long run of everything that goes on. If you can get it all in writing, and they pay upfront for everything, then fine. But the deal is that they, the state of Iowa Gaming Commission, would not allow it because of the location of our two communities that have. And I bet you, they would have said, you're too close to Sioux City, too, to have it. And you can look at Sloan that went under. And the reason why Sloan went under is not because of the white man. It was because the tribes started fighting among themselves. And the reason why I know I am Sloan.
Name and address for the record, please.
Ron Comerlich, City of Carter Lake. I appreciate all the concerns, but I mean, we're not illiterate here. We are going to enter into agreement, and it will be funded correctly. They have a four-point-eight acre track of land they want to build the casino on. They also have about six more acres of ground that's taxable. They're paying taxes today. There's buildings up and businesses in. They also agreed to a pilot agreement. I mean, I'm sure you're aware of what those are. I mean, pay in lieu of taxes. I mean, we're going to cover ourselves, and we're going to cover the community. And we're going to make sure that if we need more officers, they comp. If we need to buy a fire truck, they comp us. I mean, it would be best, before you say you're going to go into litigation and spend public tax dollars on a lawsuit, listen to both parties.
Thanks. Anyone else? Anyone from the council?
Well, we briefly alluded to it. We only have one meeting traditionally scheduled anyway, unless some, you know, something comes up, of course, and we'll deal with that. But we have one meeting in December. Just so folks are aware, normally we meet the second and fourth Mondays. Moves around a little bit to take account of like Memorial Day weekend and things like that. But December, we only have one meeting, and it's usually about the middle of the month. So if you plan to, if you like to follow those things, and I know some folks do, and we're appreciative of that, it's Monday, the eighteenth, is the only scheduled meeting left this year. So just one in December, and it's during the third weekend.
Sir? Yep.
Henry Clark, Clark Storage, five-eight-six-eight-one Kid Road, Glenwood, Iowa. Just a question on the calendar. I have something coming before the board at the next meeting. It's on a mini-storage. What's the history, the first, second, and third readings? Is there anything I can do to produce more information, or do we have to wait to go through?
Typically, we would go through two, a minimum of two readings if there's no objection from the general public or some reason to look further into it. Historically, we waive the third if you need to get going on your.
I'm just working off of a ninety-day term on the pie out, and I'm trying to see if I can get some stuff done before the ground freezes. So thank you very much.
You bet. Anyone else from the council? All right. With that, words, Jerry. Thank you.
Bye, guys.